For being here, I'd like to call, just being in the Brooklyn City Council order, Mayor Joe, can you please call the roll?
Mary Bill Beer.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodek.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Andy Selberts.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here. Before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to use my time from my committee report this evening to talk a little bit about September 11th, so you can say that if you want, Mr. Verma, but you're going to be standing for a little while. I am the chief over there. But Missy Doi was a manager at IQ Financial Systems. She worked on the 83rd floor of the South World Trade Center Tower. She placed a phone call to 911 operator at 9:17 a.m., 14 minutes after the south tower was hit. The call lasted for 24 and a half minutes before the line went dead. 15 minutes after the call dropped, the south tower fell, claiming Missy's life along with the lives of hundreds of others. Mrs. Doi gave the 911 operator her mom's name and phone number and made one last request. She asked her to call her mother to tell her, quote, "I love you," and "You're the best mom in the world." 29 minutes later, the north tower fell. Thousands of civilians, firefighters, and police officers, or heroes, perished as these planes hit and the towers collapsed. Later that evening, the 911 operator made the phone call to Missy's mom. Lieutenant Commander Eric Cranford was born and raised in Drexel, North Carolina. Upon graduation from high school, he decided to serve his country and join the United States Navy. He served two tours, one in the Persian Gulf, one aboard the USS Gettysburg, the other aboard the USS Carr. Upon completion of his tours, he landed a command post at the Pentagon. While serving his country in this role, he was also earning his MBA at night from the University of Maryland. Lieutenant Commander Cranford was killed as American Airlines Flight 77 slammed into the Pentagon at 9:37 a.m. Lieutenant Cranford was 32 years old. In the midst of Missy's 911 call at 9:28 a.m., hijackers took control of Flight 93 destined for San Francisco, California. Forty passengers and crew members aware what was taking place on the ground, put together a plan to stop the further attacks. To this day, no one is exactly sure what happened on that plane, but passengers and crew were able to crash the plane to a remote field, preventing more loss of life on the ground. In a matter of just 30 minutes, these complete strangers became forever bonded as heroes. Lauren Grandcolis was one of those passengers. She was visiting the east coast to attend her grandfather's funeral. In an attempt to get home to her husband sooner, she caught an earlier standby flight to San Francisco on Flight 93. Once aware of what was happening on the ground and now on her plane, Lauren placed a final call to her husband, who was still asleep in their west coast home. Her husband, Jack, would hear Lauren's recorded words on their answering machine several hours later. They were, in part, "I just wanted to tell you I love you. We're having a little problem with the plane. I'm totally fine. I love you more than anything, just know that." These would be the final words Jack would hear from his wife. Flight 93 slammed into that field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania at 10:13 a.m., killing all onboard. Lauren was expecting their first child. That child would have turned 20 years old in April of next year. In total, four planes were used as guided missile by terrorists to murder 2,977 people on September 11th, 2001. In the ensuing months and years, America would defend our homeland and freedoms by bringing to justice those responsible for those murders. In the 20 years' war on terror, thousands of American service personnel and civilians have perished around the world. Lance Corporal David Lee Espinoza will be one of the last to give his life in the two decades-long war. While attempting to evacuate American citizens, personnel, and Afghani refugees from Kabul, Afghanistan, another coward detonated a suicide vest, killing 13 American personnel, along with dozens of Afghans. Lance Corporal Espinoza was one of those 13. He had just turned 20 years old in July of this year. When the tragedies on September 11th, 2001 unfolded, David was only three months old. These are just four of the thousands of Americans who died as a result of September 11th, 2001. Each one was loved by someone, each one has their own story. This terrorist attack and the ensuing fallout has killed moms and dads, husbands and wives, children and grandchildren. It's claimed the lives of Americans, Afghans, Iraqis, Europeans, Black, White, Asian Latinos, and nearly every other people group on our planet. Thousands died 20 years ago on that fateful day, and many have perished over the past two decades, most recently with the deaths of our service personnel agents two weeks ago. All of resolve up terror. Though decades spanned the deaths of Missy Doi and Lance Corporal Espinoza, they and the rest of those who perished all share one common bond: they perish because of hate. As we move forward, one day at a time, it often seems that we've learned little from 9/11. But in a much-divided world, we should remember the day after, September 12th, 2001. Remember the unity and love that we felt for our fellow Americans. We were angry, we were grieved, we were confused, but even more than these, we were determined and we were united with our fellow citizens. We were united by a force so much stronger than the hate that played out on our television screens. We were united by love, a love for our fellow mankind. God's greatest command played out in small towns and big cities all over America. The greatest command? Thou shalt love thy God with all thy heart, with all thy soul, and with all thy mind. This is the first and great commandment, and the second is like unto it. Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself. It is this love for our neighbors that would unite us and lead us through dark hours. On September 12th, no one cared about politics, or race, or religious affiliations. Instead, we were all united by a common bond, a bond of love. Complete strangers on September 10th were now united on September 12th. People from all walks of life, all over America and around the world, could be seen crying and praying together. When we say we'll never forget September 11th, 2001, it is the rekindling of the September 12th spirit of love that will be the best way to honor those who perished that day. It is that love that could once again unite and heal our nation. While it often seems a daunting and nearly impossible task, we saw in the aftermath of one of the greatest strategies to unfold on our shores, the impossible made possible. Today, and this weekend, we remembered and we grieved. Let us also determine in each of our hearts that is the love, the love of God, of country, and of our neighbors that has healed us then, and it could most surely heal us today. For the thousands who have perished at the hands of hate, we remember you. For those who gave their lives to defend our way of life and our freedom, we say thank you. For those of us who carry on, we claim love to be the solution in the healing for America and for our world. Would you please join me in a moment of silence as we honor and remember the lives lost on September 11th, 2001, in the ensuing war? Thank you. Would you please stay and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Victor Ardito, 7439 Alwack Avenue. I've spoken about this before, and about the bike lanes. In some ways, I think they're great. It takes an amazing expenditure of cash, I'm quite sure. And I did Pearl Road now, where they redid Pearl Road between Snow and Middleburg Heights. It's very nice in some ways, and others, they have a divider in the middle. I'd hate to be an emergency vehicle trying to get around somewhere, or have a house that you have to get to your house, now you have to make a U-turn and pull around there. It was like the middle of summer, I was stopping on a snow road next to a taxi driver. I yelled out, "Hey, how you doing? You go up and down here?" "Oh, yeah, all day long." I go, "Did you ever see a bicyclist out here?" He started laughing, "No." And that was during the height of summer. Since then, I have seen bicycles out there. I don't know who's designing these. Is this a federal mandate that you have to do all these things? I understand the bike lanes, great, but another thing is Pearl Road in Route 82. They redid a whole lot of redesigning, center piers. If you're new to that area, it'd be confusing. You got cars going straight, then there's a divider, and then you got a car making a left turn. I thought it was quite hilarious. And I was talking to a friend that has another service guy out there that does the snowplowing and that, he goes, "Oh, yeah, it's a real trick." I don't know where the designs are coming from, is it the federal government? Especially in the winter around here, doing some of those things. I hope we don't do anything that too goofy around here, but it's one of my feelings. And again, let the bicyclist start paying more for license plates. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to settle a little bit differently for the public session. We have Mr. Maguire as here with us this evening from the Civil Service Commission. And we have on our agenda this evening ordinance 2021-22, and this is enacting Section 149 18 of School District Employees of the Codified Orange City of Brooklyn. And this would exempt employees of the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education from Civil Service Commission oversight, which they've been a part of for a long time. The Civil Service Commission did vote in favor of this legislation, and so Mr. Maguire is here to discuss that. Stevie, thanks for being here.
Good, thank you very much, Councilmembers. Thank you, Mayor, Directors, thank you very much, and the public. Joe Magrave, 4714 Elizabeth Lane. I want to first give a basic overview of the Civil Service Commission. Residents, including myself, without, before getting involved with the Civil Service Commission, they don't really understand what the Civil Service Commission does. So just giving a basic overview quickly. The Civil Service Commission consists of three residents that are approved by the mayor and also confirmed by city council. And our function is we follow Ohio Revised Code, and that's where we generate our authority as an independent group. We are not a function of the mayor, we're not a function of the city council, we are the Civil Service Commission. Three of us are members, as I mentioned. We have Brandy Emery as one member, John Patta, and myself. And while I am the Civil Service Chairman, I thought I'd come tonight and talk about this particular commission, excuse me, this ordinance. The Civil Service Commission determines the testing and the grading of testing, grading, and classification of city and school employment positions. This includes police, fire, city, and school employees. And that part really surprised me, because when I first became a member of civil service, I did not understand or really comprehend that that included not only every entity in the city of Brooklyn, but also Brooklyn City schools. The Commission provides rules for determining the merit and fitness of those being appointed, promoted, and disciplined in the city's workforce. The Commission administers and oversees merit-based testing for those seeking employment and promotion. Except as governed by employment contracts, the Commission adheres, appeals by employees on cases of discipline, removal, reduction, and layoff. The Civil Service Commission meetings are held on the third Wednesday of each month at 5:00 p.m. in the conference room of City Hall, otherwise noted through a public meeting. This particular ordinance, 2021-22, it was a unanimous decision for us to support this. The reason for this is the Civil Service Commission follows certain rules. We make sure that the testing is done and it's adequate, whether it's for our police, our fire, a city employee, or a school employee. The Commission also has the ability to allow an appointed authority, such as the Brooklyn City Schools, to handle the hiring of employees and the testing of employees on their behalf. And we traditionally haven't loved that, as long as guidelines are followed. And by that, I mean employees have to be tested, there has to be a set standard test, there has to be a process of an analysis of the test, and it has to be done with a grading system, so that there is a list, and then a certified list of employees. Now, this particular issue that we're talking about with the Brooklyn City Schools is one where it's not recent. There have been issues during my nine, excuse me, my eight years on the Commission for the past three administrations where they really haven't followed the rules of the Civil Service Commission. We have worked with the past administration and the current administration multiple times, either with the superintendent, with a school board member coming in and talking to us so we could explain to them, you know, we want to protect the city of Brooklyn, the Commission wants to protect Brooklyn City Schools, the Commission wants to protect employees that are seeking employment, and we also want to protect the candidates that are applying. And this prevents, the whole point of the Commission is to prevent an unfair test or unfair appointment, and also anything like nepotism. So everyone is treated the same in the test, everyone is evaluated according to a rubric that is provided, and from that point on, then a list is created of those particular people that passed the test, and then there's a certified list, whether it's 10% or the top 10 people that are involved. And from that point on, then the director, whether it's the school, whether it's the police chief, the fire chief, they can go ahead and hire from that list. And unfortunately, that hasn't been the case with the Brooklyn City School District. They don't seem to be following what the Commission has advised them. And by that, I mean we have looked at their contract, the Teamsters contract, and we went through it, we analyzed it, and we looked at it, and we had questions. So we contacted our law director, we've worked with the superintendent a number of times, and basically, we looked at this and said, maybe it's time that we let the school district handle their own hiring and be dissolved from the Brooklyn City, excuse me, the Brooklyn Civil Service Commission. And so we support this. We feel that there's been either some misunderstanding, some resentment between Brooklyn City Schools. We don't really understand why. We have invited them a number of times to participate and to follow what we figure, what we feel are the proper procedures, and unfortunately, that has not happened. So with that, we endorse the view on voting for this, and hopefully, this will bring a better understanding of what the Commission does and why we are severing ties with the Brooklyn School District. Are there any questions? Yes?
Phil, how does it protect the present employees now that are under this, if this should pass, if this ordinance should pass?
Okay, that I can't say, what I can say is we follow Ohio Revised Code, and if the Brooklyn City School District is doing the hiring under our guidance, we, the Civil Service Commission, we require to see the test that is provided to the candidates, whether they're employees, or whether they're outside people being hired for the first time. And then from that point on, that protection is guaranteed because the tests are evaluated, the tests are staff-driven, and the candidates then are listed. Now, with this, because we feel that the school district has not followed that particular procedure, that they've ignored the Brooklyn City Civil Service Commission, that they can handle this on their own. So they will be responsible. It will not be the responsibility of the Civil Service Commission, this will be the responsibility of Brooklyn City Schools.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just repeat a comment that, I don't know if you were here when I made this comment or not, that I just want to make sure that whether it's notifying the union leadership or the employees who, up until this point, fall under civil service, I just want to make sure those school employees are aware that they're no longer going to have that protection under the city. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, well, I do know that we've made great efforts in communicating with the superintendent. I know Mayor Gallagher was, has contacted the superintendent a number of times, sometimes with no response. And so that's really going to be the responsibility of the school superintendent. Now, I personally work for another school district in Olseth Falls, and Olseth Falls City Schools does their own hiring, and they do their own testing, and they, you know, it's separate from the city. So I think a lot of communities are going with that model, and I think it's probably the best for the city and for the schools to go with that same model.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Maguire.
Thank you very much.
Good time, I appreciate it. We can have further discussion of this ordinance when we get to it. All right, next up, we're going to have the approval of our minutes from our last meeting dated June 28th, 2021. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve the minutes, Mary Bill Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodek.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selberts.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci. Yes. Next, we'll have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin with the Finance Committee. We did meet this evening at 6:15, as we always do prior to regularly scheduled council meetings, to discuss the following. Resolution 2021-28, this authorizes the mayor to enter an agreement with Denise Zappa, trustee of the Zappa Family Trust, for the purchase of certain real property known as 7468 Memphis Avenue. This property is sandwiched between a home that the city is already purchasing and the vacant land the city is attempting to purchase in the following resolution, and so this purchase price would be $125,000. And the Finance Committee did recommend, or this was on first reading. Then Resolution 2021-29 authorizes the mayor to enter an agreement with the estate of Louis Fedor for the purchase of certain real property known as VL Memphis Avenue, personal 43122008009. This is the vacant property that's located right next to 7468 Memphis Avenue property, and the purchase price on that is $52,000. Both of these are in line with analysis and with, what am I looking for? Thank you, appraisals that were done on both these properties, thank you, I appreciate that. Right, Resolution 2021-31 is on first reading, but hoped to pass by suspension of the rules. This authorizes the mayor to enter an agreement to participate in a group settlement with other communities in the state of Ohio with McKesson, AmerisourcePersian, Cardinal Health, and declaring emergency. This has been in the news, this is an opioid settlement that has been going on for quite some time, and the funds that will be awarded to the different cities in the state of Ohio will go to opioid prevention and abatement. It's not a large amount that the city is anticipating receiving, but it'll be right around $31,000 for this, and the Finance Committee did recommend that we pass by emergency this evening. Next is Resolution 2021-32 is on first reading, but hoped to pass by suspension of the rules. This is accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them with the county fiscal officer. This is an annual resolution, it has to be passed every year in regard to our property tax millage rates for the next fiscal year, which is 2022. There is no change in our overall millage, it's still 5.9 mills, as it was, as it is this year. It also coincides with our tax budget that we also recently passed. Next is Resolution 2021-33, also on first reading vote, passed by suspension of the rules for timing. This is requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2021 tax levies pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code. And again, this is an annual resolution necessary for us to receive advances from the tax proceeds for the fiscal year of 2022. Next is Ordinance 2021-23 is on first reading, but hoped to pass by suspension of the rules to the timing of the ordinance. This authorizes the mayor to enter a contract with the Public Entities Pools of Ohio for the purpose of providing property and casualty insurance for the city of Brooklyn for the coverage period beginning September 25th of this year, for a total annual cost not to exceed $142,319. This is approximately a $10,000 price increase from last year, and this is due to price increases across the market and the significant property losses that insurers have seen overall over the past seven years. And then lastly, is Ordinance 2021-24, this authorized the capital improvement, update capital improvement plan for 2021, and this deals with the police department servers. The original server upgrade was projected to migrate with the existing hardware that we had. As part of that, it was decided that we should have a separate server for that, and so the additional cost increases there. And that's all we have for Finance. We do meet at 6:15 prior to the sort of all regularly scheduled council meetings, at this time, right in council chambers. All are welcome to attend. With that, we'll move on to our Public Safety and Environmental Committee. Councilman Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. The Safety and Environmental, Public Safety and Environmental Committee met on July 15th. We discussed Resolution 2021-25, placing a moratorium on the acceptance and processing granting of applications for zoning, occupancy, and/or building permit approvals for small box discount stores, and the issuance of such approvals in the city of Brooklyn through December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency. The committee voted to recommend that council approve this ordinance. We also discussed Resolution 2021-27, placing a moratorium on the operation of and the acceptance and processing or granting of applications for zoning, occupancy, and/or building permit approvals for short-term residential rental, sorry, real estate rentals in the city of Brooklyn, Ohio through December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency. The committee voted not to approve this resolution. Additionally, the committee was given a report from Chief Milkie regarding the purchase of 17 LPR license plate readers for the city of Brooklyn. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan Shaki. Next up is our Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Brooklyn Recreation Department presents a Safety Town Trick or Treat event on October 21st from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Brooklyn Safety Town and the Grand Pavilion behind the city hall. Children up to age 12 come in their costumes and enjoy the trick-or-treat, prizes, activities, and more. Costs for residents $3, non-residents $5. Visit https://brooklynohio.myrec.com to pre-register and purchase your tickets online. Excepting canned food donations for harvest for young hunger, costume accessories such as toys, toy guns, knives, axes will not be allowed at this event. The winner basketball, winner youth basketball for grades 3 to 6 begins on November 2021 through March 2022. There will be an eighth game regular season plus the playoffs, one to two weekly practices. Volunteer coaches needed, let us know at registration if you are interested. Practices in home games will be held at Brooklyn Middle School Field House. Week games will be held at Middleburg Heights, Brook Park, North Olsted, North Ridgeville, Columbia Station, Fairview Park, Westlake, and Strongsville. Throughout all practices and games, the Brooklyn Rec Center staff, coaches, and our communities will be following the standard guidelines set forth by the ODH, OHSAA, and CCBH regarding gameplay and facility safety. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on September 20th, the Rec Center Meeting Room, 7:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Planning Commission, Councilman Sue Grodek.
Thank you. Planning Commission had a busy summer. If you are interested in seeing the reports from July or August, they are available on board docs. And just to fill you in on September's meeting, we, the Planning Commission approved a final site approval for Swanson's Drive-In at 7414 Brook Park Road. The Planning Commission also approved the sign package for Swanson's Drive-In. The Planning Commission gave Fast Signs and Jealousy Auto Detailings a three-month extension on getting their final sign package together. And we were to review the conditions for Ohio Machinery Company, but they have decided to no longer have truck sales, so they will no longer be held to the conditional use that we approved a year ago. The next meeting is October 4th, it'll be at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Grodek. Next up is our School Board Liaison, Mrs. Bell Beer.
Thank you. The school year had started off great for both students and staff. The school thanks the community for attending the community rally on August 25th. The school hopes to make this an annual event. The schools have updated and repaved and seal-coded all district parking lots, and also, the school is planning to replace the stadium track next summer, and the district has already started the process for the replacement. They are very excited about this project. The district is also conducting a facility study this fall to begin looking at capital improvement projects that need to be completed around the district and at the high school. Brooklyn Board of Education Candidates Night, which is sponsored by the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, will be held Wednesday, September 22nd at 6:00 p.m. at the Brooklyn Acres Community Room, 6301 Room, 6301 Woburn Avenue. And that completes my report.
Next up is our Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilman Ryan Shackey.
Thank you. Thanks to the help from our Police Dispatch, Brooklyn's Domestic Abuse Commission was able to donate three cellphones to a local women's shelter. If you have an old cellphone, you can drop it off at the police station for donation, too. We will continue to collect and donate these year-round. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Committee the whole met following the Finance Committee meeting this evening, as it always does prior to council meeting, to go over the following. Resolution 2021-25, as was mentioned by Ms. Ryan Shackey, I'm not going to go over that. That's the moratorium on the small box discount stores. And the second one was Resolution 2021-27, and this was the moratorium on the short-term residential rentals, as discussed by Ms. Ryan Shackey as well. Resolution 2021-30, this authorizes the mayor to enter a job retention and grant agreement with NBW Incorporated. The owner of this, the president of this company, as well as the vice president, which is his son, was here this evening at our meeting to talk about this grant. But it'd be a $98,000 grant over the period of 10 years with an expected payroll between $5 and $5.5 million. The grant is staggered over three years. The first would be 30% of total income taxes paid in year one, 25% in year two, and 20% in year three. And they would expect to grow from 25 to 30 full-time employees, and the requirement would be that they are in the city of Brooklyn for at least 10 years. This is a family-owned business. The father that was here this evening is the third-generation owner and getting ready to pass it on to a fourth generation. So we're very happy to have NBW here with us and their new location. They're going to also be doing about $4.9 million in renovations to purchase the property, update the property, and that'll be located at 9,000 Brook Park Road. That's a property that's been vacant for about a year, and so it'll be good to have NBW Incorporated coming into Brooklyn, so we welcome them. Then we had a brief discussion on Ordinance 2021-20, and Ordinance 2021-21, Ordinance 20, it was introduced by the mayor, and this is in regards to providing regulations for the transient rentals, and 2021-21 would outright ban them. And so these were both placed on first reading. There will be much further discussion on both of these ordinances as we move along. As was already mentioned, the committee the whole does meet following the Finance Committee meeting just prior to all regularly scheduled council meetings. They take place right here in council chambers. All are welcome to attend. With that, we'll move on. Reports of council will begin this evening with Mrs. Bell Beer.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone back. I can't believe the summer is over and we're on to another year. I just don't know where it goes. Maybe because I'm retired now, it seems to go pretty fast. I'd also like to mention, Mr. Ardito, your concerns are my concerns. I would definitely have to say this past summer, it threw me a couple curbs as far as bike lanes, and I'm hoping Chief Milkie can address them. We spoke earlier. I did happen to see a fellow on a bike, a regular bike, it was not motorized in any way, in the middle of the street driving, and I was just taken aback because not only do you watch your cars, but now you're watching bikes. I don't know as far as how the laws go, if, being a motorist, I'm allowed to turn into bike lanes or drive into bike lanes, but they do seem to be everywhere, and I'm hoping, I'm not fond of them, they scare me. Maybe it's because I'm a mom, I don't know, but maybe Chief Milkie can expound on that a little bit at some point.
I'll be happy to answer some questions on that, Mrs. Bell Beer. Ohio does have a stay-right rule, law for the bicycles, but it applies, all bicycles on the riding street have to follow all the traffic laws as first and foremost. They have to stop at stop signs, red lights, and all that stuff, just like they were if a car had to ride in the street. They are to stay right as best that they can, but the law does allow them to move from that area if there's a hazard, a hole, something in the road, something like that, or if there's not enough room for a vehicle to safely pass them within that lane, then they can use the lane. If they're making left-hand turns, they're going to have to make, get into another lane, too. So when a bicycle is in the road, got to follow all the rules, but a vehicle has to give them three feet when passing that bicycle on the road. And most of our lanes around here do not allow that, three feet to pass a bicycle. I think that's the purpose of these bicycle lanes, is to give them a path, which isn't always hazard-free for the bicycles. There's nothing that requires bicycles to use a bicycle lane when there is one available. Nothing at the state level, nothing here in Brooklyn either, that requires them to use it, and we actually can't require them to use it. So I think the biggest lesson is just be respectful of the bicycles. I think they appreciate it. I did witness an almost accident with some bicycles this past weekend, and somebody turning onto an engine tramp, and somebody stopped, and the other bicycle was, they were just going straight and almost got hit. So the bikes gave respect to the car, but the car didn't, so.
Thank you, Chief Milkie.
If there's anything else, I'll be perfectly happy to answer your question.
One other question. If I choose to ride my bike, do I, I don't have to go into the street?
Right.
May I ride it on the?
Yes, we have nothing in Brooklyn that could ever.
Okay, thank you, Chief Milkie. This past Saturday marked the 20th year anniversary of 9/11, with special thanks to Brooklyn citizens Rob Slattery and Steve Herbig for coordinating the event, also with the help of Rick Singer and Aaron Borowski. The memorial was held at our Brooklyn High School Stadium. Special thanks to Reverend Father Michael Phelps of St. Thomas More Parish for his prayers, benediction, and blessings. The singing of the National Anthem by Professor Eva Marie Jacobs, a former Brooklyn alumni. The honor guard, Brooklyn Boy Scouts Troop 319. Brooklyn school participation with the music department, including the Brooklyn Singing Storm and the Brooklyn High School Band Trumpets. In attendance were our Brooklyn Police Department and our Brooklyn Fire Department, who during the 9/11 tragedy set men to ground zero. The speakers were congressional candidates to CIA officers. I was particularly moved by the speech given by Judge, by Supreme Court Judge Sharon Kennedy. She spoke of the events of September 11th, 2001, and how that day had the opposite effect of what the terrorists had tried to accomplish. It did not divide us by fear and apprehension and gloom. It solidified us as Americans. That day, it did not matter what political party you belong to, what your religion was, what the color of your skin was, or what your profession was. We were all united as Americans, and it made us appreciate our freedom and our great nation more than ever. I had tears in my eyes when she was finished speaking. It was truly a moment of solidarity, of grief, and grace, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. I hope everyone had a nice summer break and welcome back. I'd like to offer my sincerest condolences to Chief Scott Milkie and his entire family on the passing of his father Dale A. Milkie, as we keep you in our thoughts. I would like to thank John Verba in assisting a resident on the north side of Bit Off for his effort in getting a blind sign installed on that street. Both the resident and myself greatly appreciate it. There are two ordinances regarding Airbnbs that are being talked about with the city council members. I would like to address the ongoing debate on Airbnbs and the effect of having them in our city. Ordinance 2021 has rules and regulations that must be monitored. Our police department should not have to babysit Airbnbs. We do not have staff 24 hours a day to monitor these Airbnbs, nor should we have to. Also, our building department has enough rental issues, and the service department has a full schedule as well. I'm going to read the impact of Airbnbs while all three service departments in our city do not need an additional headaches, nor do our residents, our elderly, nor children need to put up with. Most importantly are the safety issues of strange cars and strangers coming in and out of these structures, all hours of the day and night. I ask city council members to picture this nonsense going on right next door to their homes and families. I understand you want businesses in Brooklyn, but not in residential areas. Remember, you're not just running to Airbnbs, but as a lot of residents that I talk to, they tell me how they have witnessed large groups of people coming in and out from all over, not just Brooklyn. You want hotel and motel space taken out of residential areas to the main street like Tiedemann or other hotels in Cuyahoga County. I have received multiple complaints with just a few Airbnbs in our community. Now picture a whole city full of them. I would ask council, have you, have you, have any of you received calls from Brooklyn residents saying they are in favor of such properties going up in their neighborhood and on their street? I can tell you that I've received a lot of feedback from residents who strongly oppose any such idea. Not only is there the safety risk with the amount of people coming in, coming and going, but there are a lot of external factors that would negatively impact our city, such as trash pickup, noise stress, property maintenance, and the quality of life in the residential neighborhoods. These are the reasons why hotels are not located next to houses within 10, 20 feet. Brooklyn is a nice community where residents should not have to put up with this kind of abuse. With no disrespect to council members, but always remember, I have not received one resident in favor of any Airbnb in their neighborhood and on their street, however I received multiple complaints against them. When residents have safety concerns, I will be always on their side. This issue is a no-brainer when it comes to safety. The biggest factor is residents asking council to take action on this. Following email, which I'd like to read, is just one of the many complaints that I have received from residents on this issue. Reads as follows. There is also another house on our street that is for sale, and the owner of the Airbnb took a picture of the for-sale sign as they drove off by last week. One is bad enough, two definitely pushes out and forces to move out of Brooklyn. A house sold in late January, early February 2021. The newcomers who live in Medina made an Airbnb, and it has been rented out each weekend several times for more than just one, just a weekend, since it became available March, April 2021. Here are some of the issues we've experienced. Garbage pickup is on Thursday. Cans have left, cans have been left on tree lawn all weekend several times. I once called the service department when they were still there following Tuesday. Multiple cars coming in and going all hours of day, night, several times they just sat in their car in the street while the car running and lights on for 20 minutes or more. Cars parked on street blocking driveways. Cars parked on the wrong side of the street. Renters on more than one occasion have parked in the street. Only the minimum, only the minimum, cutting the grass is being done to the yard. There is no lawn edging or pulling weeds, and owner who doesn't live in the city has no ties to the neighborhood or the city, and certainly does not have pride in ownership. There are already too many rentals bringing the city down. We don't need Airbnbs to start taking over neighborhoods and disrupting our daily lives. There are many other complaints that I have received on this issue. Many Airbnb rental units are in violation of local zoning regulations, and there is a strong possibility that these units are indeed imposing large costs on neighbors. Ordinance 2021-22 is to ban any further Airbnbs from coming into our city. Keep Brooklyn a place where everyone can call home. In reviewing the pros and cons of Airbnbs within the city, I am strongly opposed to allowing any such entity in the city of Brooklyn. I believe only persons that would benefit from the Airbnb would be the property owner, and as your councilman, I am looking out for all Brooklyn residents and do not think the Airbnbs are a good idea for our city. As a small community, I believe that the safety of our residents far outweigh any benefits of Airbnb would bring, and again, I ask council members to support a ban on any Airbnbs from coming into our community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Tansky. Next up, Mrs. Groddick.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I would like to start by thanking you for your beautiful tribute to 9/11. I don't think I ever get tired of hearing them, but your stories brought a human aspect to it that I think we often forget. Thank you so much. I also think I cry every time, so thank you for making me cry once more. So although this is our first council meeting since June, it has been a very busy, busy summer for council. I think we all would agree with that. Hopefully, the residents have been keeping updated with our city hall and police station project. As a matter of fact, we broke ground officially tonight. We've had several meetings during the summer as plans for the outside of the building have been finalized, and we're now working, working on seeing the inside details come together. Another exciting project is our zoning code revision. There are many opportunities for public input. It is a long-term project, and I hope that you will be sure to watch our previous meetings and make, make an attempt to attend the future meetings. You can also contact anyone on city council to express your views on what our zoning codes need and how we need to revise them. Several of us on council are also on the planning, the revision committee, and please keep in mind, before anything is permanently changed in our zoning code, we all have the opportunity to vote on it as a whole community. The goal right now is for it to be placed on the November 20, 2022 election. So it's really an exciting time to become involved in our city. If you haven't considered attending a city meeting before, now is really a good time to join us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Ryan Shackey.
Thank you. I hope everyone had a great summer, and it's great to see everyone back in person again. While my summer was busy with cleanups and, like Ms. Groddick said, civic center and committee meetings, I still enjoyed some downtime and even got to take a small trip out of town with my husband and dog. The community cleanups are more than halfway done with volunteers cleaning up our parks and the main street entrances into the city nearly twice a month since May. I want to thank our residents that have attended for keeping these successful and for Brooklyn's Home Depot employees who have joined us in our efforts. If you want to get involved, our next cleanup is at 9:00 a.m. on Sunday, October 3rd. We'll meet at Knights Commons at the corner of Ridge and Bit Off, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Selhards.
Thank you. Just to kind of feed off of what Meg just said, we're also working with the schools with Mr. Herr, working on possibilities for community hours for juniors and seniors. He has a meeting with another organization this week, so there's going to be some opportunities to get your hours and for your graduations to get fulfilled. Bubble's Yard is still going on. There's two more events. It's on the fourth Thursday of each month, or fourth Tuesday, correction, at the end of each month at St. Elias. Next one is at September 28th. Starts officially at 3:30. Last time I was there, we were getting setups. People were there already at 1:30, so sadly to say, there's still a need there. It's fresh fruits and produce, so if you or you know of someone that has the need for these items, please help yourself. And as summertime, it's always just a busy time. Thank Mr. Verba and his staff. He's always kind of, kind of, let's say, short on staff. That's a whole different issue. But taking care of resident complaints and issues, and also, we're working now with this LED lighting project, trying to get some safety concerns taken care of. So he's trimming some trees as well as some heavily wooded residential streets, so there'll be some better lighting effect, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Selhards. Next up, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back. Unfortunately, over our break, there were several residents and former longtime residents who passed away. First, Chief First Chief Milky, I offer my condolences to you and you and your family have been in my prayers with the passing of your father. Samantha Call, who's a longtime resident, she passed away at age 37. Samantha was a devoted teacher and advocate for children with special needs. Her parents are Chuck and Janet Call. Kathy Murphy Jacobs, wife of retired firefighter Jay Jacobs and mom of Jill and Megan. Kathy was also the sister of the Murphys, including our former colleague on council, Tom Murphy, and our retired police chief, Jack Murphy. Kathy was a devoted wife, mother, and grandmother. A former resident, Pierre Boza Dennehan, who grew up here in Brooklyn and was always very proud that she was from our community and until recently still owned property here. She worked for the Governor Celeste administration and later became a leader in the affordable housing and community development industry. She was a great mom, grandmother, a devoted sister to her brother Gene Boza, and also a really good role model. I knew her my whole life as did Mary Jo. So my condolences to all those who lost loved ones. As was mentioned, we had the groundbreaking for our new city hall and police station just prior to our meeting. This is really an exciting day for our community. We've had several meetings and I think residents are really going to be pleased with the final product. Of course, Saturday was the anniversary of 9/11 and it's really hard to believe that it's been 20 years. And it's very important that we always honor the victims and their families. And this also includes the first responders who still to this day suffer illnesses relating to working on that site for months and some who have passed away from those illnesses. I had the opportunity to visit the site in the museum a couple of years ago. And if you ever get a chance, I would really encourage you to go there. The site is very peaceful and it has cascading water. And I'm sure many of us have seen it on television, but when you're there, it's, it's just, you just can't even describe it. The victims are, their names are all inscribed in the granite that goes all around the cascading water. The museum is underground and it is really remarkable how they document the events and the lives of those who have passed away. There was one thing that resonated with me and that's a scene by Virgil that's inscribed in a large tile wall. It's like massive. And it says, "No day shall erase you from the memory of time." I'd like to thank the residents who put together an observance. I had responded to the invitation. Unfortunately, I did have to work that day, but I did hear that it was very nice. And hopefully next year we'll be out of COVID and we'll be able to do some long-term planning. And I think it would be really nice if we were able to go back to when the fire department sponsored some sort of remembrance for that day. Mr. Ardito regarding the bikes. Bicycle use is really increasing and I know it can be confusing with the bike lanes. I know Lakewood is one of the communities where I think the vast majority of their streets now, at least the main streets have the bike lanes. And I think as motorists, we just have to have a heightened sense of awareness because I don't think this is going to change anytime soon. There's a lot more cyclists out there and it's of course very important that we, you know, remain aware of them to keep them safe. I'd like to thank Mr. Verba for all the work that was done on the trees on Hammond Avenue. There were a couple of residents who had complained a while back and they really did need attention. The one resident did call me on Friday and the residents are just so pleased and said, "What a great job the men did." So thank you for your efforts on that. I know being short-staffed and trying to juggle a lot of different jobs, it wasn't easy. I have a report on the Rethink Recycling, Recycle Right Brooklyn project. And I'm happy to report that we did show tremendous improvement in the level of contamination in our curbside recycling stream. We went from 38.1% down to 20.6%. We conducted our post audit on August 10th. And that particular day, which was similar to our pre-audit, we handled 1,246 pounds of recycling and waste. We really handled double though because we take the samples, they're weighed, and then everything is put on this big table to sort. And then as everything is sorted into the different categories of recycling and also the non-recyclables that were included, then we have to weigh them again and then dispose of them properly. And it was a very hot day. It was, it had to be in the high 90s in that garage when we did it. Throughout the study, the contamination rate did improve and this is a 46.4% decrease in contamination that can be attributed to the success of the recycling cart tagging education program. Specifically, the change in each type of contaminant is as follows. For bagged materials, and these are materials whether they were recyclable or not, but the residents placed them in a bag, we had a decrease of 65.4%. For non-recyclable plastics, we had a decrease of 37.6%. And for other trash, a decrease of 37.9%. So while we did a really great job, there is still room for improvement, but we're on our way. I'd like to thank the following for their support and assistance with this project. Cuyahoga Solid Waste District for their financial, technical, and moral support, specifically Karen, Jessica, Doreen, and Matt. A special thanks to retired executive director Diane Bickin for her support of this project from the beginning and to the new executive director Beth Biggins Raymo. From Brooklyn, I'd like to thank the mayor and finance director Ragus for their support. And my deepest gratitude, of course, to service director Verba, who had to deal with the day-to-day issues, including supervising the recycling assistants and responding to residents, including some that were quite angry at us. Our recycling assistants Nina, Gavin, Mark, and Jessica, they all did a great job. Not only did they show up each day for work at 6:00 a.m. and worked effectively and efficiently, but they also conducted, conducted themselves in a professional manner and they represented the city well, even in the face of some trying circumstances in dealing with some upset residents. GT Environmental, Jim Sikora, Catherine Traut, and Erin Olton, I'm sorry, for their technical assistance and sharing their expertise. I had mentioned in the beginning that part of this plan was for Brooklyn to be the pilot or the demonstration project for other communities in the county to follow. And Mr. Verba and I are tentatively scheduled to give a presentation to all the services, service directors in the county in late October. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. I used my time for my report at the beginning, so at this time, we'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Council President Van Kirk. And I have to say, that was a beautiful opening to our meeting. The words and the time it took, I think you encapsulated what 9/11 represents and the feeling that I think all of us had the day and the day after. So thank you for that. We did have one retirement last week, Christopher Baxter. And although he did not want to attend the meetings because he's sort of a shy guy, you wouldn't think, but he is. I do want to recognize his service to the city of Brooklyn and read out loud some of the stuff in his proclamation. Chris began his career here as a Brooklyn police officer in December 27, 1999. He retired on September 9th. He worked in Sagamore Hills Police Department for five years prior to that. Chris worked as a traffic enforcement officer from June 2004 through September 2008. He worked to help secure an 18-year-old jail sentence, secure an 18-year jail sentence for a child molester, worked undercover during a prostitution investigation resulting multiple arrests. He disarmed and intoxicated an aggressive male armed with a knife at Staples on Brook Park. And while conducting a traffic stop, Chris was dragged and ended up subsequently stopping and arresting a suspect with multiple warrants after a short pursuit. He's had several notes of gratitude and recognition in his file. And I just want to acknowledge that, his hard work and dedication on behalf of the city of Brooklyn. So congratulations to him on his retirement and a job well done for the city of Brooklyn. Also, I wanted to talk and give a little bit of update on the city center project. I know many noted that prior to this, we had the groundbreaking for the building parts. We are wrapping up the parking lot on the recreation center and that should be done at the end of this month. And we will be starting the main building process. Again, this building will have, will be going on and hopefully we will open up October of next year. That is our timeline. In this current space where city hall sits, we do have an opportunity in working with the library and possibly moving, building a new 24,000 square foot building. In the current library, that would revert back to the school. I know Tracy Struble just sent me an email today basically saying that she's getting final approval from their board and they would like to go out for an RFQ for design work and would like to reach out to the community to get their input by this November. So it's exciting things going on with the project here. This police station has been a long time coming, so I am grateful to get to that point with all the hard work of the people sitting up here and the administration to get to that point. I put this notice out to city council as well as John Benson did an article. NOACA is resuming their stop program, the signalization timing optimization program along Bridge Road from Dennison till Pearl Road. So they're going to be doing traffic counts this month and signal counts this month as well as next month with the hope of having a full project completion within nine months. This will come in perfect timing for construction for Bridge Road from Flowerdale to Pearl Road for next year, which will inevitably be a nightmare. Along with other nightmare traffic coming up in a few weeks. The Memphis Bridge near Kitty Park, which has been under construction for a little while now. The county has informed us that they've reached an agreement with independent excavating and they plan on closing down half of the bridge to one-way traffic, only moving west up to 10 months, which really means with weather about 12 months possible. And so this means that many of your traffic patterns, if you go that way, will be stopped and there will be a detour, so please plan accordingly. We have informed the businesses in that area. This is upcoming. They are waiting for the railroad's final approval before it is released. You'll have a two-week period where we will put out notice. I've requested before any work starts, so we don't know the exact date, but it is coming up. So again, it will be one-way traffic moving westbound. When they open back the other side of the bridge, it will be two-way, two-way after that for the last year of completion. Nicole Blunk, our housing manager, started a few months ago. I just love it. She's kind of acclimated and gotten to the routine. I just want to remind residents that they have a complaint about the exterior of a housing, commercial property. She is the person to call. That's Nicole Blunk. It's 216-635-4213. Same email address as all of us. It'd be the first initial N, last name B-L-U-N-K at brooklenohio.gov. And she is really trying to get caught up on some of the property that we feel like we could be doing a better job of going after, especially in the commercial corridor. We will continue the same routine as we had before. We do exterior inspections on residential property. It's a three-year period of time, so your house will be looked at at least one time in three years. And notice will only be going to those who are not in compliance with our current zoning code. And it's really just to make sure that our neighborhoods stay up to par. And you know, if there's something going on in your life where you can't tackle something, you just call the building department and let us know. You know, we're just trying to keep up with things and do the best we can, especially when it comes to rental properties in particular, because that's where we have a harder time of compliance. But again, just give her a call if you have any questions. We do have something on here about small box retail and moratorium. I would ask that if city council does not plan on passing that tonight, that we move the date from December 31st out from six months to the date of passage. I have heard back from the county planning commission and they are willing to look into this in particular topic coming next year. They had not planned for it this year. Many cities have moratoriums on this, but as our law director would say, you know, ultimately, we have to ensure that we are going through the legal process to justify this. So looking at this in a greater detail would be easier if we're working with other cities to do it and the county planning commission being a regional entity would be a perfect person to lead that look because this isn't just a Brooklyn issue. This is a regional issue that are facing many cities in this area. As far as the short-term rentals after our safety meeting, I mentioned this in committee as a whole, you know, reading the room, I can see the direction that people want to go. I would support an ordinance passed in any capacity, even if it was Mr. Tansky's ordinance. I would ask that if, you know, we continue to move forward on one way or the other, if that is the case, I think that we could just safely remove the moratorium ordinance as we are moving forward with an ultimate outcome on today's agenda so we can declutter some of the stuff that's continual. An update on Brook Park streetscape. Many of you know that we received a grant through county planning along with Cleveland and Parma. The county planning commission continues to do that work. They've reached out to the businesses in that area, did a business survey, getting their feedback of what's working for them and what's not working for them as far as parking, zoning, the, the street conditions, their feeling on landscaping and streetscaping. So that continues to move along. They are in their third of five phases, so hopefully they'll have a completed plan that they release next year. And let me see, I want to make sure I have everything. Three more things. We had an update with the county on the triennial update for real estate taxes. They took Arm Lake sales from 2019. If you don't know this, this is Ohio mandate that they do every periodically, every so many years. So complying with that mandate, looking at the Arm Lake sales for each community in different ways. Brooklyn saw a 20% increase in residential value, 7% commercial, and a 10% in industrial. This is above the county average in all aspects. What this means for residents is there will see increased real estate taxes in a certain measure for certain portions of the village. And part of that, you've seen the, the real estate market has been very hot everywhere in the county and nationwide. So if you would like to object to that, there'll be instructions on the back of that real estate notice to you coming up later this year. And then the county will have several community meetings planned throughout the area. So we will get all that information out to you as soon as we have that on social media and our newsletters. Also, with our census, some of the initial data came back from the 2020 census. Brooklyn's numbers did go up, which is great news. Overall, the region went up, but Cleveland and the county went down. So some of the takeaways for the county planning commission would be that the regional population has continued to grow in the surrounding counties, but not Cuyahoga County. The city of Cleveland remains our region's largest city, but the population continues to fall. The inner ring suburbs comprise the largest portion of our county's population. The outer ring suburbs now compromise a larger population than the city of Cleveland. The population in inner ring suburbs as a whole is finally stabilizing, which means that we've seen this urban sprawl happening over the last couple of decades. We've built out a lot of those outer ring suburbs and we're seeing a pushback in, which is a good sign for cities like Brooklyn. Though total number of housing units has decreased in Cuyahoga County over the period of the last 10 years. Occupied housing units have increased. So one of the good aspects is that the foreclosures and the vacancy that happened in 2008 is not really an issue right now. Some of the recommended recommendations and opportunities, looking at the census in this particular area, is again, buildout is stopped. We really need to start looking at infill development. When a lot of houses got demolished, especially on the east side after the housing bubble, we need to find opportunities to build in those areas and stop continuing to build out out of the county. And so looking at new housing options. And so, looking at new housing options is a way to do that. And welcoming diversity and immigration into our county is a way for population growth to increase our economy's capacity. And then, one last thing we did not address in committee's whole, Council President Van Kirk, was the police's request for a full-time jailer. I would like to talk about that tonight, because we would like to move forward with posting that prior to going through the budget process, so we can save that end period of time to go back to it.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on with our agenda for the seating or legislation, then we'll discuss that at the end. The first item is a notification from the Fire Department. I failed to mention, we do have one further report, I'm sorry. Before we get to that, it's Mr. Ragus from our director. So, go ahead, Mr. Ragus. Sorry, let me just get you there.
No, you're fine. I appreciate it. Just one update for me. So, as with fall is approaching, also means that we have upcoming budget work session scheduled. So, our first work session will be on October 1st, 6:00 PM at the Senior Center, where the main focus will be the capital budget and updated capital, five-year capital improvement plan. Towards the end, we will be talking about the general fund as far as 2021 projection and a preview of the 2022 general fund budget, which leads into the second work session that we have scheduled on November 1st, where the main focus point will be the general fund and updated financial forecast of the general fund. And then, we also have one on November 15th as a placeholder, if there's any needed items from the prior work sessions. Similar to what we did last year, we didn't need that meeting last time, last year, so we have that as placeholder if needed on November 15th. Work sessions are 6:00 PM at the Senior Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ragus. Appreciate that. The first item we have is our, we had a grant that was awarded to us from the Ohio Division of EMS for $2,765.56. So, we thank them for that. This will be used to purchase medical equipment for the Fire Department. Resolution 2021-25 is on second reading, placing a moratorium on the acceptance and processing, granting of applications for zoning, occupancy, and/or building permit approvals for small-box discount stores, and the issuance of such approvals in the city of Brooklyn through December 31st of this year, and declaring an emergency. Resolution 2021-27 is also on second reading, placing a moratorium on the operation of and the acceptance and processing or granting of applications for zoning, occupancy, and/or building permit approvals for short-term residential real estate rentals in the city of Brooklyn through the end of this year as well, and declaring an emergency. New to our agenda this evening is Resolution 2021-28. This authorizes the mayor to enter an agreement with Denise Zappa, trustee of Zappa Family Trust, for the purchase of property at 7468 Memphis Avenue at a cost of $125,000. Also on first reading is Resolution 2021-29, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with the estate of Louis Fudor for the purchase of certain real property known as BL Memphis Avenue. And of course, this is the vacant land right next to the 7468 Memphis Avenue property. Resolution 2021-30, authorizing the mayor to enter into a job retention and creation grant agreement with NBW Incorporated. Resolution 2021-31, we hope to pass by suspension of the rules, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements to participate in group settlement with other communities in the state of Ohio with McKesson, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, and declaring an emergency. Any comments or questions?
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Sir.
To suspend the rules. Mary Billbirer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selvertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Billbirer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selvertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-32 will also hope to pass by suspension of the rules, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them with the county fiscal officer. Any comments or questions?
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Mary Billbirer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selvertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-33 will hope to pass as well by suspension of the rules, requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2021 tax levies pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34. Any comments or questions? Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Sir.
To suspend the rules. Mary Billbirer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selvertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Billbirer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selvertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Next three ordinances are on first reading. Ordinance 2021-20, amending various sections of the codified ordinances to provide for the regulation of transient rentals. Ordinance 2021-21, amending Section 1109.01 of the codified orders of the city of Brooklyn in order to place a ban on transient residential rentals. Ordinance 2021-22, enacting Section 149.18, quote, "school district employees," end quote, of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn, in order to exempt employees of the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education from civil service commission oversight. Ordinance 2021-23, we hope to pass by suspension of the rules due to the timing needed, authorizing the mayor to enter a contract with Public Entities Pool of Ohio for the purpose of providing property and casualty insurance for the city of Brooklyn, the coverage period beginning September 25th, 2021, for a total annual cost not to exceed $142,319. Are there any comments or questions?
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Sir.
To suspend the rules. Mary Billbirer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selvertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-24, hope to pass by suspension of the rules, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2021. Any comments or questions? Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Sir.
To suspend the rules. Mary Billbirer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selvertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
All right, as the mayor mentioned a second ago, we can have a brief discussion regarding, I believe it was Mr. Ragus that sent the email out discussing the potential of hiring a part-time, or a full, excuse me, a full-time jailer. And we did run out of time in committee of the whole, so we can discuss it now. So, Mayor, do you want to turn over the chief? Is that, how do you want to do it?
Yeah, I don't know who has the numbers. Chief?
Tom's got the numbers. I have to reason, so. I'm asking for a full-time jailer. At this present time, we have three full-time jailers. We've, over the years, relied on part-time corrections officers primarily from Kaiba County. They fill in on the weekends, all day Saturday and Sunday. Over the last year and a half, those part-time COs that we've had employed aren't working as often. They've received a large raise downtown to the tune of about 25%. And they're still understaffed downtown and they've chosen to work overtime. Obviously, it benefits them more to work downtown at this point than it does out here in Brooklyn. I took a quick analysis of our hourly wage. We're still in the top half in the area for part-time corrections officers at our hourly wage. It's just a, and every industry is getting hit with this, just less people working, less people choosing. I've put out a couple of employment advertisements for part-time corrections officers. I even attended a jail training, which I've required to, and stood up in front of the class and asked if anybody there wanted to work for the city of Brooklyn. Not one application did I receive. Put a Facebook post out, I think, two weeks ago, got a couple of applications. One of them looks really promising right now. Still got to explore the other one. But we just don't have the part-time staff at this moment to staff the jail the way we need to. And I don't think I have to tell you what kind of a liability the jail can be if you don't adequately staff it. If you, in an example, take a look at Kaiba County and what's gone on in the last few years there. Allowing me to hire another full-time jailer will reduce the amount of hours that we rely on the part-time staff from 48 a week down to 16 a week. I still have some part-time COs that work for us. It'll help reduce the amount of overtime. Right now, we're paying full-time corrections officers and even police officers of overtime to work the weekends in the jail for us. And looking ahead at the new place, we're going to need more staff there. This is something we'll discuss further during the budget process. We're still working with the state to determine exactly how much coverage we need and at what times, things like that. So, and for the sake of safety and liability, I'm asking for this additional full-time jailer. Already got a schedule set, exactly where we're going to go. We just need to go ahead and post it and start taking applications if you guys approve it.
I also want to touch on that. As I mentioned in my email, I did an analysis with Chief Mulkey. We believe that we have enough reduction in overtime that we're paying to full-time officers, as well as a reduction in part-time hours, that initially that this will pay for itself. In essence, the savings will pay for the additional full-time jailer position. As you grow through the collective bargaining process and the salary schedule, we'll still have substantial savings that will cover most of those costs associated with the full-time jailer position.
Thank you. Neil?
Just, I mean, I guess just the feedback, we're looking for, are there any objections?
I have, I don't have objections.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
What, how would this new full-time person, how would they work into the schedule? They would be on the weekends?
Yeah, so, it'd be a split shift where they're covering afternoons and nights during their work week, with rotating days.
Will you have, will you have enough personnel to still cover the part-time even after you hire this one? Are you, are you, you said you have a couple?
So, we're going to reduce the part-time reliance down to 16 hours a week. I anticipate we'll be okay.
Okay. I don't have any objections.
At this moment.
And what is the hourly rate of pay?
It's 1881. Don't quote me if I'm wrong on the change.
Yeah, just follow.
18 and change.
Okay. I have no objections.
Any thoughts on council?
No.
Anything else from council or the administration?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just one answer to a prior question. Chapter 124 of the Revised Code is the chapter that governs civil service. 12407 and 09 empower the Department of Administrative Services and the Director to operate civil service commissions on behalf of entities that do not fall under some municipal civil service commission. And so, employees are, and the Director of Administrative Services is permitted to preside over that chapter with respect to any of those entities. Suffice it to say, school district employees would be covered by that chapter going forward and would be able to avail themselves of the rights of employees found in that chapter. And the state would preside over that process and potentially appoint a local civil service commission, not us, to oversee it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, anyone else? All right, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. Excuse me, to adjourn? Mary Billbirer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?